We're going to get started here. My name's Tim Malinsky, I'm the mayor of Cottonwood, and you are at the 2017 Cottonwood Strategic Planning Retreat. Thanks for being here. So, we're going to start our next hour block here after the lunch break with folks really around economic development. We have representatives from Local First Arizona, Cottonwood Chamber of Commerce, Old Town Center for the Arts, and the Bicycle Advisory Committee. I'd like to go ahead and invite the representatives of those organizations up front, and I'd like you to sit at these chairs, please, then I'll call you up one by one to make your presentation. And I want to thank those folks who braved the harsh weather to come out today, especially those from out of town. And Elena Bullard, you're more than welcome to sit up here as well. So here's how this works, okay? So each presenter gets 10 minutes to present. I know there was some confusion about whether or not you got seven minutes or not, but we're going to give you 10 minutes to present, okay? So I'll call you up, come up here, make your presentation to council, then please have a seat back at the table, and the next presenter will be called up, and then all of you can sit back down at the end, and we're going to take questions and answers from the city council for the remainder of the hour. And I'm going to be real strict on time, so I borrowed some props from my three-year-old daughter this morning. We have a xylophone to warn you when you're at nine minutes. Sounds like that. Very pleasing, very pleasing sound. Okay, so that's nine minutes. When you hear that sound, you have one minute left on your presentation. When you hear the cowbell, that means you're done, and you have to sit down, okay? So you don't want to hear the cowbell, Dr. Richards. You don't want to hear that cowbell.
Not a chance.
And I don't want to hear it either. Okay, so I'm going to call up Mr. Thomas Barr first. He's from Local First Arizona. He's Director of Operations. Thanks for being here.
Afternoon. Thanks for having me. Like Mayor Malinsky said, my name's Thomas Barr, the Director of Operations for Local First Arizona. Local First Arizona is a 13-year-old statewide economic developments nonprofit organization. We are based in Phoenix, Arizona, but have offices in Tucson, Cottonwood, and Flagstaff as well. Our central work is behind educating everyone that lives in Arizona, whether you're a consumer, a business owner, a policymaker, anyone that's here, the importance of shifting our spending towards locally-owned businesses, because when you do that, you create more economic activity. We know for every $100 spent at a local business, about four times more money will stay in our community rather than that money being spent at a national chain. So, we do a lot of work statewide. We're actually split as two organizations. We're a 501(c)(6) and a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. Our (c)(6) is our coalition of local businesses. We have 3,000 that we work with throughout the state, and we're the largest local business coalition in the country. Our (c)(3) is a foundation, and the city of Cottonwood is actually affected by both of our work in those two areas. We represent a little over 100 businesses in this region, which I'll gladly hand out to you after I'm done speaking, but we have actually just recently produced our fourth Small Wonders map of the Verde Valley. This drives tourism to this area. We distribute 50,000 of these statewide, and we've also done work with Eric Jurzen and the wineries in the region to plan staycations right here in Cottonwood, to bring people up from Phoenix to get to know the region and hopefully visit again. So we've really worked on that tourism piece. Our foundation is focused on rural developments, a local foods initiative, and then also we run an accelerator program for Spanish-speaking entrepreneurs in Phoenix, which we're hoping to grow all of those programs. We hosted the Rural Policy Forum here in Cottonwood in years past, which had representatives, economic development representatives from every major county throughout the state to discuss tourism and all those different types of things. Our biggest challenges at Local First Arizona is educating people, leaders and people in positions of decision-making. The overall effects of not just focusing on attracting larger companies to come over here and looking to retain and expand the businesses in our communities, and forward-thinking behind investing in the local companies that are right here in our communities, and turning the wheel beyond just thinking that a local business is a coffee shop or boutique. Those businesses that you may spend your morning coffee dollars at turn and spend that money with web developers and graphic designers and payroll service providers that are all here in our communities that we don't see on the news or hear about all the time, but are those secondary jobs that really spin the wheels of our economics. And so, we are just proud to work with the city of Cottonwood and this entire region, and we actually really just want to congratulate you and thank you for all the work that you've done to put the Verde Valley on the map. I don't think that there's any other region in Arizona that has done such a great job of celebrating its locally-owned businesses in their community, and so that is huge for us. And we'd like to continue to work with you as you continue to grow and highlight those businesses in this community and be a resource for those businesses. Our directory on our website is getting searched 65,000 times a month, and we have lots of resources that we can do for the businesses in this community to help them grow and expand and connect outside of the region as well. So, thank you all for having me here today, and I will go ahead and pass out our latest Small Wonders map.
Very good, thank you. All right. Next, we have Christian Oliver Del Rio from, he's the Director of Operations for the Cottonwood Chamber of Commerce. Thanks for being here. I'm sorry, it, what did I say? Director? You're the CEO, excuse me.
President/CEO. Yep. So, Cottonwood Chamber of Commerce stimulates economic growth by providing membership benefits through marketing promotions, information referrals, education, government relations, and advocacy. Wanted to give you a little bit of history about the Chamber of Commerce. The Verde Valley Chamber of Commerce actually became a 501(c)(6) in June of 1948, and we changed the name to the Cottonwood Chamber of Commerce in 2007. We have 15 board members currently, ranging in backgrounds from education, real estate, construction, retail, government, tourism, media, food, and utilities. We run the Chamber of Commerce with two and a half staff, and it's an interesting process, let me tell you. When we compare to Sedona, who has roughly 10 staff members, we get a lot done with our two and a half. We also have 25 volunteers, which make it possible. Partnerships are the key in running the chamber. We currently service 550-plus members, and 300 of those are Cottonwood businesses. Like I said, partnerships are key. We were just talking with Doug and William here that, you know, Cottonwood is becoming very well-known in partnerships and working regionally. We work locally with the city, the business owners, nonprofits, schools, and communities, but regionally, with all five communities, each of the chambers, we get along very well and promote economic development, workforce development together. On the county level, we work with NACOG and the Workforce Development Board. At the state level, we're members of the Arizona Chamber Executives, as well as the Arizona Chamber of Commerce, and nationally with the Western Association of Chamber Executives. We also run a visitor center. The visitor center is an official Arizona Office of Tourism LVIC, which is a local visitor information center, plus we are the DMO in the area, which is the Destination Marketing Organization. Some of our partnerships are the Office of Tourism, the Verde Valley Tourism Committee, which is a committee of the Chamber of Commerce, and we also work at the Sedona Verde Valley Tourism Council, which is with all five communities promoting the Verde Valley as a whole. We just recently started working with Nat Geo as well through the Sedona Verde Valley Tourism Council. Lot of marketing that we do. We developed a partnership with the Old Town Association, CDC, Parks and Rec in the city, to do a co-op marketing program through the Office of Tourism, and we're getting a lot of exposure there. Looking forward, I would like to see that the Chamber of Commerce become a tourism bureau. There are certain qualifications that we have to meet through the Office of Tourism, so we'll be working on that through 2017. We've recently joined the ABA, which is the American Bus Association, so we're looking at trying to draw more of those tour groups into the area. The Wine Trail, we established the Wine Trail about seven years ago. Started out pretty well. We think things have kind of gotten stagnant over the last couple of years. We're looking to revitalize that and make that happen in the next year as well. Currently, my Director of Tourism, who we just recently hired about six months ago, is in Chicago doing media marketplace shows there, as well as in Cleveland. So she's gone for the next two weeks doing a lot of travel shows in that area to draw more. We get a lot of travel writers internationally, as well as nationally, and those are all coming through the Office of Tourism. One of the things that I learned from my predecessor, Lana, is to not say no. When the Office of Tourism calls you and says, "We got somebody that's want to come to the area," you show up and you make it happen. So, we've been working very hard at that. Some of the challenges that I see in the next year, and it's been interesting because I was doing a lot of research on the computer and looking at a lot of our history files. These two issues that I'm going to raise, we've been dealing with for about 20 years now. We've outgrown our office space. That's our biggest challenge. The building we're in was built in '83, and it's kind of fallen apart around us. Staff, we definitely need to build on staff. We have two and a half staff members, like I said. Other chambers in serving this size community generally have more. The way I see us working with the city and hoping to build in those areas is to renew our agreement for the promotion, development, enhancement of tourism and economic development, which in other terms is the bed tax. That's a pretty large amount of our operating budget, and it does allow us to build on tourism and getting people to the area. And we want to continue working and partnering with local government to build those relations and advocacy favorable to our business community. And that's all I have.
Very good. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next, we have Mr. Willie Eaton, co-director of the Old Town Center for the Arts.
Thank you, Tim, and all the council members and guests here today. We've really enjoyed the relationship we've had with the city of Cottonwood, and applaud you for this proactive retreat today to reach out to all the different groups that you work with and create collaborations and cross-pollinization. Great idea. I'm just going to use this handout here to outline some of the things we've done. Our mission is pretty straightforward at Old Town Center for the Arts. We are a performing arts center, and we're dedicated to bringing the best in arts and culture and entertainment to the city of Cottonwood and surrounding community towns. We are also supporting and presenting community and educational events. And the third item listed, which may be perhaps one of our more important items, is contributing a significant economic impact to the city of Cottonwood. And we serve the residents of Cottonwood primarily, but we draw people to our events from all the surrounding communities, Cornville, Clarkdale, Jerome, Sedona, Camp Verde, and we have, people are coming to our venue from all over the country now and from Europe. So we're, when they come and say, "We just came here just to see this event," talking to Doug earlier, we kind of joke you out, sure you're not going to visit any of the other kinds of wonderful geography and other things that are here in Cottonwood, but it's fun when they make a trip that far. These next few pages just kind of further detail some of the things we've done over the years. Our theater opened in 2008. We actually started Old Town Center for the Arts in 2005. This is our ninth season. We've programmed 473 concerts and events over those nine years, which averages about 55 events per season, which, if you don't know, that's a lot of programming for a small town and for a small venue. Lots of events at Old Town Center for the Arts, and we've had performers international, national, regional, local, performers from every continent except Antarctica. So if you know somebody in Antarctica that's a good musician, tell them, or theater person or whoever, comedian, send them our way. And the bottom of this page shows some of the backdrops of Old Town Center. We pride ourselves in the lighting, the sound at Old Town Center, and if you've been to a show there, you kind of probably know that, but we have some really great backdrops that Christine Eaton does as our lighting director, and some of the acts want to take her with her because of the job that she does. The next page is on supporting and presenting community and educational events, and I've got a listing of some of the things we've done, especially some of the multiple things like the Spring Planting Festival, Backyard Gardening Expo, Water to Wine Festival, Celebrate the Rivers. We've done three of those. That's one of our favorite events because the Verde River is really the heart of Cottonwood and the entire Verde Valley agriculturally, sustainably, and of course, the city of Cottonwood is, was honored with the City of Decade Award. Again, applaud the efforts by the council members and everybody involved in the sustainable initiatives that the city has promoted for management of the river and water resources. So, that's the listing at the bottom of the page. Mentioned Studio B, which is not a small mention. We've had over 35,000 people through that just to do classes in dance and yoga and movement arts, visual arts, all kinds of things that happen at Studio B. And Elena Bullard, who is here and does so much for Old Town Center, has really been the person that coordinates all those activities, and she's a yoga master in her own right and has done classes there since we first started. Third page, contributing a significant economic input, impact to the city. About five years in, we learned that performing arts centers really have to devote and be supported by more than just ticket sales. And the average performing arts center receives 35%. Ticket sales is about their budget, which means 65% of their budget needs to be fundraising, grant writing, and many of them have city support. And that's when I decided to make a presentation to the city a few years ago and was very pleased that the city has been very supportive and have funded us the last three years. In return for the funding, what I offered at the time and still reiterate is what a performing arts center does to a community. When people buy a ticket at Old Town Center, if they are a local attendee, they're spending on the average about $31 in addition to that ticket price. So they're going out to retail shops, they're going out to dinner, transportation, they're staying overnight, they're spending money in the community locally, and that's a significant impact. If they're an out-of-town visitor, they spend even more. The average expenditure is about $55. So that adds up, and we've, with the Americans for the Arts Prosperity Project, they, in 3,000 cities in 33 states, and they conducted these surveys to find out, what are the statistics? And this is one of the main statistics that they came out. They created a model, and I have that on the very last page, I printed that out, to just show you, it's, you input data, and in this case, we input our total expenses over the lifetime of our theater, about $1,150,000, and our total attendees, about $115,000, which is significant itself. And probably the most significant number that relates to the city directly is in city sales tax, and in this amount of time, about $170,000 is estimated that goes into the city coffers directly through sales tax. So that's a benefit, and that's why so many cities, by the way, support performing arts centers. I learned this from Tempe Center for the Arts, Scottsdale Center for the Arts, Chandler, Mesa Art Center, and all over the country. That's how they exist. So that's the economic impact. We have, with this retreat, the challenges that you asked for. Our two top challenges are, number one, expand our personnel and management resources. To accomplish what we do, there's really two of us that do almost everything, and we're both in this room, and if you look at that same indicator by the Americans for the Arts, our organization, by the numbers we've created, is something like eight people to do those jobs. So, in keeping Old Town Center viable as a performing arts center for Old Town, for Cottonwood, and for the area, we are just embarking on a nonprofit status. We work now with Cornucopia, and they are a fiduciary agent, and we worked with the community council for a few years. We want to help bring in more people and identify expertise that can help with administrative duties, sound and lighting, marketing, ticketing, concert and event programming, day of show activities. We do have a significant volunteer base. It's always been as many as 70 people that we draw from that help with our events, so that is significant. The second challenge is our budget and our financial compensation. As I mentioned, ticket sales represent about 35% of an average budget. For us, it needs to be about 90%. We have increased ticket sales over the years, about 5% a year. Our average now is 115, and we sell out many of the events, sold out last week and the event before that. But our key challenges will be fundraising, grant writing, and creating this 501(c)(3). How can the council help support our work? Well, the funding that you've allowed so far has been critical to our success. At that point, at year five, we were really debating, can we continue doing this as we lose each year? So, that's been critical, and identifying the personnel requirements and networking and cross-marketing with city and local organizations. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Eaton. Appreciate it. Now, before I call up Dr. Richards, I think I failed to let the panel know that the incentive for finishing on time is that I'll give you a $5 off coupon to the Historic Home and Building Tour in Cottonwood. So, so far, three of you have received the $5 off coupon. I'm hoping, I'm hoping beyond hope that Dr. Richards will receive one as well. So please come forward. Dr. Richards is the, he's a committee member of the Bicycle Advisory Committee.
I'll do my best to get a coupon. Thank you, mayor and city council, for asking the Bicycle Advisory Committee to be part of this retreat. I do want to mention that we have several members. In fact, all the members back there in the audience, except one, are members of the Bicycle Advisory Committee and/or active bicyclists in the community. If you'd just please stand. If you please sit down. Thank you. The first question is, what is your primary mission and to whom do you serve? Bicycle Advisory Committee serves at the discretion of the mayor of Cottonwood, and the previous mayor, Diane Jones, approximately eight years ago, set out the Bicycle Advisory Committee basically to improve the bicycle culture within the city of Cottonwood. And part of that was the accomplishment of getting a bronze level as a bicycle-friendly community. We also serve the bicycle community of Cottonwood, and that is our primary mission, is to improve the bicycle environment within the city of Cottonwood. Second question we were asked is, what are your top, under two key challenges in achieving the mission? Key challenge at the moment is to educate and engage the various staff departments and the city council so that all components have an understanding of what is involved to move the city of Cottonwood from its present bronze level as a bicycle-friendly community to silver level. To accomplish silver status, Bicycle Advisory Committee needs financial resources, as well as direction from the city council. Third question is, how can the city council support your work? City council can support the Bicycle Advisory Committee by becoming familiar with the recommendations of the committee to improve the bicycle environment within the city and provide resources to move from bronze to silver status. This involves, one, updates of existing ordinances as complete, or a completely new ordinance, dealing with either just bicycles or more inclusive transportation ordinance. Two, a financial commitment in this budget cycle to fund the bicycle map, which is 70% design-complete, a banner advertising Bicycle Awareness Week, advertising and publicity Bicycle Awareness Month, purchase of bicycle racks, and purchase of bicycle logo signs for bicycle-friendly businesses. Three, the bicycle plan needs to be updated, which involves those staff departments which are familiar with the five Es of the bicycle plan. Those five Es are engineering, enforcement, valuation and planning, encouragement, and education. Engineering would seem to be under the auspices, you might say, of Public Works, whose representative just came in. Enforcement, the police department, valuation and planning, community development. Encouragement, Bicycle Advisory Committee. And the fifth E, education, is proposed to be handled by the Health Department of Yopac High County, and a representative is here today. The Health Department of the county has always been a strong member of the BAC, and we really appreciate their involvement on the committee. Four, integral to becoming a silver bicycle-friendly community is working with ADOT for bicycle lanes along 260 and 89A, making Main Street to Old Town more bicycle-friendly and improving bicycle parking, including consideration of a bike rail in Old Town. Two of the bicycle advocates on the committee, as well as Hezekiah Allen, our liaison with the city of Cottonwood, have spent a great amount of personal time engaging stakeholders in present and future plans for bicycle improvements in Cottonwood. All stakeholders have been supportive. Near Packet, you'll find a six-page document outlining detailed recommendations of the Bicycle Advisory Committee, as well as other information. Shows pictures of bike rails, shows pictures of bike racks, shows pictures, a small picture of a design in which you could place the logo, the city of Cottonwood, within that design framework and market that to local businesses within Cottonwood who wish to be known as a bicycle-friendly business. Unfortunately, there are not enough time allowed to engage the city council in more specific aspects of the plan and recommendations of the BAC. Committee now needs decisions by the city council with the directions to staff and the committee as to the scope of involvement for all parties, including the city council. Regions that have invested in bicycling have seen tangible economic impacts. Studies show that the bicycle industry, bicycle tourism, and the health benefits of bicycling create jobs, economic activity, and cost savings. Representatives of the Bicycle Advisory Committee would appreciate being placed on the agenda of a city council meeting in the next couple of months to discuss in detail the recommendations so that the city council can make appropriate decisions as to the direction that they wish to proceed before the budget process is finalized. Until then, our actions are limited. Thank you for your attention.
All right, very good. Thanks. Great presentations. Council, let's open it up for some questions. Councilmember Henry.
I had a question for Mr. Barr. This is the first time I've seen the Small Wonders booklet, and it's really neat. How often do you publish this, and how do you, you know, do you limit who can participate in this, or how do small, local, small businesses get involved?
Sure. So that is the fourth time we've done the map for the Verde Valley. We do them on an annual basis for the region, so we've done it for the past four years. And like I mentioned before, we print out 50,000 of them and distribute them statewide so that we're not just pushing them out in this region. We have them at Sky Harbor Airport and with realtors and hotels and different things like that so that people will travel up here. For a business to participate in the map, they need to be a member of Local First Arizona. And to be a member of Local First Arizona, you just need to qualify by our standards of a local business, and that just involves the owner of the company living in Arizona, being a private company, the majority of their business being in Arizona, and not being affiliated with any type of national firm or anything like that. national firm or anything like that. So we recruit all new businesses and existing businesses that participated in the map in previous years each time we do it.
Thank you.
Can I expand on that just a little bit? That we are members of Local First, and they are distributed through our visitor center as well, so we get a lot of the local tourists that come in and take those as well.
Thank you.
Yes, as long as, we've got Mr. Barr speaking here. The Rural Policy Forum, I, I've attended that in the past, I know it's been in towns of Miami, Arizona, and last year was in Pine Top Lakeside. This coming year is going to be in Safford, I believe. Can you expand more on that Rural Policy Forum? I think it's important information for the council. Unfortunately, we didn't have any representation last year at the Rural Policy Forum, I attended, but Local First really does a great job at promoting rural Arizona, and they bring leaders, I'm going to let you talk about it because I don't butcher it, but I, I just would encourage council to consider attending one of these forums. So please, if you wouldn't mind, speak a little bit more to that.
Sure, so the Rural Policy Forum is centered behind the, the fact that we know that Arizonans alone travel to California to spend about six and a half billion dollars every year vacationing. And so, this is put together to bring the leaders in all of our rural communities together to strategically think about how we can drive more tourism to our rural communities. And so, these aren't, I mean, these are the, the top-level people running our cities and towns throughout Arizona that are coming together to learn from each other and to collaborate on specific strategies on how to keep people spending their tourism dollars in our rural communities throughout the state. And so, yeah, we're excited to be in Safford this next year, and, I mean, we represent cities like Aho and Bisbee, as well as the northern regions, so there's a lot to learn at this, at this forum.
Very good, thanks. Any other questions from council? Sir?
Do you have a brief timeline on the reconstruction of Mingus?
So, the question is, do we have a brief timeline on the reconstruction of Mingus? Really not part of this discussion, but if you leave us your information, we can get, get back to you on that. Thank you. I had a question for Mr. Eaton. You and I spoke recently about sort of your direction is moving into nonprofit status, and would you mind speaking just a minute to council about that, what you see as your future goals? And if you could just speak directly into that mic so we can hear you.
Yes, I had a conversation with Harvey Grady with Cornucopia, just a couple weeks ago, and Harvey, for those of you who don't know him, is involved with a lot of the food distribution. Wonderful gentleman, and been very philanthropic throughout his career in the last twenty, thirty years. Asked him about the process, and he got me in touch with Barbara Latrell, who's, does the Health Coalition, Mental Health Coalition, and met with her and Rose, and had a nice, they walked me through the whole process. And so, I will be ready to start this weekend with submitting the information. They tell me it's a three- to five-week process. When I first looked into it, ten years ago, it was about a year-long process, and pretty cumbersome, and we looked at our resources to, you know, to decide, is this manageable? Partly because I have a full-time job, and also do some other work as well, and so it was just a, a time consideration. So this direction is to do two things. One is to improve our ability to do fundraising. If, if we continue to receive funding from the city of Cottonwood, that meets part of our goals, and really to go to the next areas to do more significant fundraising. And this, by the way, is, is pretty inherent throughout the performing arts community, that's just how they operate. We've seen, in this last year, many come and go. Studio Live left the Canyon Moon Theater. In New York City, the New York Opera, after fifty years of operation, went out of business. Why? They're selling out every show, but that, if, if ticket sales represented fifty percent, they still have significant fundraising to do. So it's really, it's really how that world exists, and so we'll just have to get more active with that.
Okay. And I understand that you don't operate any programs during the summertime?
Correct.
Can you speak about the reasons and challenges that you have at your facility, why you're not able to?
Yeah, those have, who have not been to Old Town Center, we operate out of a historic building. It's a stone building, it's beautiful, and in our, Tim sponsored a historic excursion a couple of years ago, we participated in, and, and it was built in the thirties, and you have to appreciate people going down the riverbed, collecting all this river rock, bringing it up, putting concrete mix in and in form, so that building is really a wonderful old building. It's been home to everything you can imagine, five churches, Department of Motor Vehicles, music store, antique store, but it doesn't lend itself easily to air, well, the cost for us would be prohibitive at this point. I think we got one bid for twenty thousand dollars, and just was out of the question. So we use an old-time swamp cooler until it gets too hot. For us Arizona natives, it's fine, it gets to about seventy-eight to eighty, you know, and we could do events there, but we worry about people coming in in the summer and saying it's too hot, you know? So that's the main reason. We, our heating works fine, in the wintertime, we have a, you know, an old-time heater that we use, but that's the main reason. So our season goes from mid-September to May.
Thank you. Yes, please, Councilmember Allen.
If by some miracle you could get HVAC in there, would you continue to operate year-round?
I could see Old Town Center evolving to that. In my case, with my involvement, it's nice to have a little time off. I run a guitar-making school in Phoenix, that's my primary job, I do recording, performing, I tour, and so to try to maintain all those things, to be honest, it's difficult to, to, you know, go year-round. But that's not out of the cards, if, and that's part of the nonprofit process, we'd have a board, we try to identify more technical expertise that can do the sound, lighting, the day-of-show activities, and I think Elena can back me up on this, she's, she does the work of about three or four people, so it's just kind of how we've looked to the future.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think moving into nonprofit status, I think, would open up some other avenues for you too, so I look forward to that. Dr. Richards, do any of your bicycle committee members, have they had any contact with ADOT? Do you, how, in what ways do you have any discussions with ADOT?
I've been in contact with Mike Sanders, who's kind of the bicycle pedestrian representative for ADOT, and in your, your packet, you'll see somewhere, I can't remember exactly where, but they speak that if there is a fifteen-foot wide part of the roadway between the gutter pan and the outer stripe, you might say, designate that roadway, if there's fifteen feet, that's enough room for a fo-, four-foot shoulder. They have other criteria that they look at, you know, road use, traffic, speed, volume, and all of that, but, and I went out, put my life at danger, laid a tape measure across up by Willard, and it appeared to meet the fifteen-foot requirement. So it appears that the roadway on 89A, at least near Willard Street, meets the criteria to have enough room to put a, at least a four-foot, maybe even more bike lane.
Okay. So can you speak to what it, what it requires then to have ADOT, will ADOT stripe that then?
It requires you, maybe the city manager, maybe Public Works, to get involved with ADOT, and talk to them, and there's been some thought that this might be a very expensive project because they would have to restripe it, and they might very well want to put some of that cost, and not all the cost, on the city of Cottonwood. I'm not sure of that, you know, that's just what I, I've heard, but I, I can't substantiate that, I haven't talked to anybody in ADOT about that. But it certainly, if that space is there, it certainly opens the opportunity for dialogue with ADOT.
Okay. Councilmember Henry, please.
I just had a quick question. I don't know that much about the bronze and silver and gold distinctions, but you mentioned a couple of items. Is it feasible for Cottonwood to, to reach silver status or beyond, and if so, do you have a proposed timeframe, or is this, is this a, you know, far distant goal, or is this something reachable in the next few years?
Yes, it's reachable. Sedona became a silver bicycle-friendly community, this is 2016, I think it was 2015. We initially were a honorary designation. We are now a bronze. And so, in all reality, I think we're a much more bicycle-friendly community than Sedona, and I think we have that capability of moving. And in the packet, there is a sheet that is provided by the League of American Bicyclists that tells what the requirements are to, for us to move to silver status. And at least I hope Hezekiah put it in, yes, he did, he was very good. And it's, it's, it's this sheet here, and it basically, down below it says, key steps to silver. And those are also in here, plus other recommendations by the Bicycle Advisory Committee. This is a very, very, very complete document.
It looks as though there is a lot of really good information. I know Phoenix recently joined other cities that have bike rental, bike share programs, where you can basically rent a bike in certain locations downtown, and then drop it off at a different location. Has your commission or committee looked at any similar bike programs for Cottonwood?
We haven't, we're, we're a small area of the city of Cottonwood, and I think that that is more applicable to metropolitan areas. I think Denver has a program like that. It takes an investment by the city to, you know, buy bicycles, put secure areas where people can get them and return them, so we have not looked at that, in all honesty, I don't see that being a part of our bicycle community.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I had a few questions for Christian Olivalde Rio, about your, your current location. I know it's undersized, probably inadequate for, you know, what you need now. Do you own that property?
We do.
Okay. What opportunities do you see on the horizon to getting in a new location or a remodeled location, or what's going on with that?
We've explored a couple different options. We've been approached by three different developers that are interested in, in the area, and exploring those options, we actually, just this past week, came across APS, has a modular unit that's about thirty-five hundred square feet, and they're looking for a nonprofit organization that could potentially use that on their property, so we're going to be looking at that, and we've been in discussions with a developer that's pretty serious, and we're hoping that within the next few months, we'll start seeing things happening there.
Oh, great. But you stay at that same location, though?
Correct.
Just move the modular to it?
Yeah, we've explored multiple locations around town, and we all are dealing with the same thing, it's, it's hard to make a left turn, or in or out, and we're in a pretty high-traffic area, so it makes sense for us to stay there.
Yeah, okay, great. Anyone else? National Geographic, can you speak to that a little bit? I think this is incredibly important for our region, and I don't think there's enough attention being, being paid to it.
Yeah.
I mean, not, not, any fault to your own, I'm just saying that we're not having the conversation about what a great opportunity this is.
Sure, we actually just did our second annual toast to tourism at the Blazin' M, and that's, the Sedona Verde Valley Tourism Council is primarily so. All five communities have come together and been working with Nat Geo to promote geotourism in the area, so that's a, a whole different class of tourists coming into the area, they're going to have a lot more respect for the environment and keeping things, you know, doing well. So there is, and I believe in my handout that I gave you, there's a website that you can check out, let me find it, so, the sedonavaldivalley.netgeotourism.com, and so it's local businesses can actually go in and, and create their own little, like, mini-page through that, and visitors throughout the, internationally, are coming in and visiting that site, and you can see those different businesses that are hosted there.
I understand we're one of five in the nation that are Nat Geo geotourism sites, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, that's impressive for, to have that designation, thanks. Any other council members have any questions? One, one last question for Mr. Barr. What does it take to host the Rural Policy Forum? Whose arm do I have to twist?
That's going to be Kimber.
Okay.
But we'll make sure she knows you guys want to.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, thanks.
And if you attend this year's, I'm sure that would help.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you offer babysitting as part of your program?
That hasn't been proposed yet, but I'm sure I could talk to you.
Okay, good, all right. If there's, yes, if you could speak into the mic, thanks, Mr. Eaton.
This, this is related to the last question that you asked, Tim. One thing I should mention is our, being more proactive for outreach. Old Town Center for the Arts is a performing arts center, we think of it as a community resource, and if any of you have ideas related to events that need a space, we are available for those kinds of things. For the council, we've done lots of things, as you see from the list, for sustainable organizations, Sustainable Arizona, Spring Planting Festival, Backyard Gardening Expo, and all those kinds of things. But in the spirit of collaboration, I mean, I can imagine events with a chamber at Old Town Center, or a local first, you know, things that, that just need a, a place.
Okay.
What, what happens traditionally, by the way, is performing arts centers usually originate by citizens, and somebody gets interested, and they get a committee together, they go to the city, or it's a university oftentimes, and that committee is what develops a plan, and oftentimes it's funded by sales tax, an addition, and, and that's how those originate. So we've kind of backed into it, we started five years into it, and then started looking for outside funding sources. So I, I mention that because I know in the five-year strategic plan, arts center is one of those things listed, and we just want to put in the idea that, that there is a facility there. It's a, a vintage place, and citizens may say, we want something more up-to, up-to-date and modern, that's fine too. They, those go for anywhere from millions to fifty, seventy-five million, depending on what you want to spend, but those, those exist for communities as well.
All right, thank you. All right, there's no other questions, we'll go ahead and move to a break. Thanks very much for coming up, appreciate it.